Okay. Agenda stuff. We will call the regular meeting to order, please. Roll call?
Mayor Murphy.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Turco.
Here.
Councilmember Doby.
Here.
Councilmember Gross.
Here.
Councilmember Hasselbrink.
Here.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance and stay standing for the invocation by Councilmember Hasselbrink.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
He's got your hands with me. Our gracious heavenly Father, we just are so blessed to live in this country where we can meet, talk about our freedom, fight for our freedom, and just discuss our city business. We ask that you give us the wisdom and the guidance as we make decisions tonight that will affect our residents, our businesses, and the future of our city. We just ask that you be with all of our first responders in our military uniforms as they protect us around the world without even knowing us, and they're willing to put their lives on the line for us. We ask all this in your precious name. Amen.
Amen. All right. Please join me for the presentation before you sit down. Shit. Okay. Tonight, the city loses one of its really good friends in Master Sergeant Bobby Chavez, and we're here to thank him for his years of cooperation. Things right now with the base could not be going better, and we give you a lot of credit for that, sir. So, please come up and join us. Hopefully, you'll say a few words.
Oh, absolutely.
Thank you.
No, I'm not. So, I came to the base in 2015, so it's been the last four years with the base as I move up to the state headquarters to be the new EO. But, I will tell you, between, I was just talking to Mayor Murphy, I started when he was the mayor. I'm leaving as he's the mayor, so I went full circle between Les, Ron, Emmeline, Shelley. It's been a great time. Dean, so, I can't tell you how much it's been fun with the city, and hopefully, things will progress very well, especially with Generalini coming onboard.
Thank you. Certificate on the side. There we go. Thank you. Good luck in Sacramento.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. Did you take this, please?
Sure.
And today, we also get the joy, though, of welcoming a new Parks Recreation and Culture Arts Commissioner, Jose Orozco. Please come up. Jose is joining us in what really is the greatest use of democracy when citizens get to give their time to help make the city a better place. Would you care to say a few words?
No. It's a pleasure to join you guys, and hopefully, we get a good outcome.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Enjoy the commission.
Thank you.
That's all we have today. At this time, any individual in the audience may come forward to speak on any item within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council. Remarks are to be limited to no more than five minutes per speaker. Anyone? Oh, I'm sorry. I see it now. Howard Kumerman.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Howard Kumerman. I'm the Executive Director of the Cypress College Foundation, and I'm here today to talk to you about the 45th Annual Americana Awards that are going to be taking place on February the 29th at the Disneyland Hotel Grand Ballroom, and also to introduce your City of Los Alamos Honor Ee, Dr. William Poe. You all know him. I know. And, so, I want to first thank the city for your longtime support of Cypress College, of our students, of the foundation, and of the Americana Awards. You've sponsored the event, you've provided auction items, and you've attended for many years, and many honorees from Los Alamos. So, first of all, thank you very much for your participation. This year's Americana Awards, our Man of the Year is going to be Bill Terramina, and our title sponsors, Union Bank. We expect over 600 people. We're going to have over 250 silent and live auction items. There's an opportunity to win a Yamaha quad vehicle. There's all kinds of fabulous things that are going to be happening. The most important thing is, we're doing two really important things. One is, we're honoring citizens in the eight cities that are represented by Cypress College, including Dr. Poe here, and also, we're raising money for Cypress College students. There's 288 students that are currently from Los Alamos attending Cypress College. Started, they're going to be starting next week at Cypress College. 66 new students from Los Al High School are starting and joining us, too. So, there's a, you have a stake in the things that we do because your students are attending Cypress College. Cypress College, for 2020, was named the number-one community college in California out of 114 community colleges. They rate the college based on all of our transfer and student achievement statistics, and also reviews by students. So, it's a real honor for Cypress College. And then, we use the money to give away to students in scholarships, book grants, emergency loans, and last year, we gave away $400,000 in scholarships to our students. So, we're doing some real important things for the students that we have. And then, of course, Dr. Poe here is going to be recognized on February 29th, so we hope that you're going to join us to see him recognized. He's going to be receiving one of these Americana medals, not yet, but on the night of the event, you're going to get an Americana medal. Just a couple of things about Dr. Poe. Of course, he's a well-known dentist in the community. Everybody keeps saying he's dentist to the stars, especially since the Chamber Awards the other night. He has many other accomplishments in the community. He was, one thing you may or may not know, he's a Cypress College alum. He got his A-Adrey at Cypress before going to UCLA and USC to get his DDS, and he's a charter member of the Los Al football foundation, past president of the Los Alamos Rotary, and also of the Youth Center Board as well, former Chamber of Commerce Man of the Year, involved with the Hedwig Pony Baseball League, and a football coach. This is only a sample. Of course, you have to come to the Americana Awards to hear all the rest of it. See the video that we are going to be showing that night that's going to showcase and highlight his life as well. So, it's going to be a fabulous night. I want to thank the Americana Los Alamos Committee for helping to nominate and select Bill for this honor. We also have one of our foundation board members here. Beth Pyburn is here in the audience, and Bill's wife is here. A lot of people here to support him. You all have saved the date cards as well, and we hope you're going to join us for the event. Bill, do you have anything?
Just that it's a great honor for me to represent the City of Los Alamos, and I hope to see all of you there. Should be a good night.
Good.
Thank you very much. We look forward to seeing you on the 29th.
Since Troy's not here, and he normally gives a great spiel for, about Cypress College and the Americana Awards, just want to let you know that my wife won't go to anything, and this is the one event she actually asks about. When is the Americana Award? So, it's the greatest compliment you can get, believe me. And it is, for those who have never been, it is the classiest event. The food's great, which is hard to do with 600 people. The auction is incredible. My wife won two events last year with my credit card, and we're looking forward to some more wins this year, I'm sure, but we'll see you on the date.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay. We will go on to council announcements. Dean, would you start, please?
Let's see. Tail end of, well, not the tail end, the middle of December, I attended the swearing-in for the new Seal Beach Police Chief. Then, we had a swearing-in for four new Los Alamos police personnel on the 7th. On the 8th, I got to be involved with the mayor for the ribbon-cutting for Code Ninjas at, on Cotella. I attended the promotion for Colonel Dusich as he received his star, and then was told he's leaving for Washington, DC, the Pentagon. Last week, I attended the Orange County Prescription Abuse Coalition. There will be a program for parents and students that's going to occur at McCullough Middle School at 7:00 on, oh my goodness, Friday, the 25th, I believe it is. And you're encouraged to come out and attend that event. It will be primarily on the effects of vaping, but it's wide open for discussion, so there'll be some good professional folks there that understand what's going on within the illicit drug world, so please join us.
I attended the Orange County Mosquito and Vector Control District Monthly Meeting where, you know, the control board is responsible in all of Orange County for addressing vectors, mosquitoes, rats, other animals that carry diseases. It's a great organization, and it's been a pleasure to serve on that board. I think, depending on what we do with Item 12A tonight, I may be passing on my responsibilities on that board, but it's been a great honor to be on that board. I also attended the Chamber of Commerce Installation, where I was honored to induct the new Board of Directors and Executive Board. We had a meeting last Tuesday where we selected our newest council member, Councilmember Doby. Congratulations. And we discussed fiscal sustainability, attended the promotion ceremony at the base, where Nick Dusich was promoted from Colonel to Brigadier General. Obviously, in the short time he was with Los Alamos, here in Los Alamos, he made great connections, and he's going to be sorely missed when he heads to Washington, DC. And I attended the Police Officer Promotion Ceremony, Councilmember Gross mentioned, where we welcomed four new individuals to our police department, and it was really excited, really exciting to see them join our department. And I know there's a few Parks and Rec-focused events coming up. I don't know, were you going to give them a chance to talk about those? Okay. I'm going to try to make all of those as well, so, thank you.
Thank you. Tanya.
Hello.
Hello, Herman.
Oh, yes, okay. I didn't want you guys to hear me before you're supposed to hear me. I am just so excited to be up here and to be representing my city, and you can believe I will be at all of the Parks and Recs and Culture Arts Commission events because they're very dear to me. That's it.
Thank you. Shelley.
With the rest of my colleagues, I did attend the promotion for Colonel Dusich to Brigadier General, and we were told a couple of weeks ago that a four-star general from the Pentagon had come in and swooped him away, so he's going to be doing great things there. On a good note, Brigadier General Mike Leeny will assume the position as Base Commander. He's been at JFTB for about four years, so the transition will be rather seamless, and he's planning on carrying forward everything that Colonel Dusich had started with us. Did attend the Chamber Gala last week. Congratulations to Southland Credit Union as Business of the Year, Casa U Shelter as Nonprofit of the Year, and Judy Cablo as Citizen of the Year. I think I got them all. And then, on a good note, our former mayor, Troy Edgar, this morning was sworn in as Deputy Under-Secretary of Management for Department of Homeland Security. He will still, he's still waiting for his CFO confirmation. That should happen in February and March, but as of now, our Los Al is being represented at a very high level, which is really exciting. And then, I had asked for the mayor if we could close tonight in memory of Frida Kaplan. We'll do a quick little bio on her. She passed away on Saturday at the age of 96. She was one of the original Rossmore homeowners, lives right across the street from Rossmore Elementary. She was, she started her produce business in downtown LA at the Produce Market, and in order to properly raise her two daughters, she moved her business to Los Alamos, just off of Lexington, a number of years ago. She was named Produce Man of the Year in 1972. She was the only female, and they didn't know what to do with her, so she made her own name. She is responsible for introducing over 200 types of produce to the US. While the regular produce markets were bringing in lettuce and tomatoes and bananas, she was bringing in kiwi, jicama, alfalfa sprouts, snap peas, turmeric, spaghetti squash, habanero chilies, shiitake mushrooms, mango shallots, dragon fruit, star fruit, and Meyer's lemons, to name a few, over 200 of them. In 2016, they did a documentary on her called Fear No Fruit, and we were honored and blessed to be able to do a premiere of it here, a showing of it here in our community center. Everybody was dressed in purple, which was her signature color, and we had her fruit tasting in honor of her, and it was, she's, she looked, she watched very closely the business of our city, and was constantly giving me ideas and things to do, and she will absolutely sorely miss. Her two daughters now run Fridas, so that legacy will continue on, but she was definitely a trailblazer in her field. And with that.
Thank you. You know, sometimes in this job, you get to do a lot of really cool things in one of those months. We met some interesting people. I got to go to the Code Ninja grand opening with Dean, also got to meet with a Cub Scout troop who, to pass us a wee blow, they had to ask, all asked me one question, and they asked a lot of personal stuff. It was kind of cool. With almost all my other colleagues, went to see, he was Colonel when we went to see him, now he's General Dusich. What a loss for the community, but he had some really kind words to say about the council and the work we do with the base, and I think he has moved the base forward, our relationship in a tremendous amount, and set a really good future going forward, unlike the future in the past, I guess. Also, went to the police appointment promotion. So, I'd like to welcome Police Aid Demery Agiri, Record Specialist Gina Tavasky, Police Sergeant Joseph Medici, Police Sergeant Sean Krogman, and Police Sergeant John Crook. Welcome to all of them. It was a very good ceremony. The chief is quite an MC, so thank you. Also, got to attend the 100th Birthday for Jean McGetrick over at the Cotella Senior Living Center. It was actually very moving. She had a lot of family, they all came in, and it was quite an event. And finally, was at the Chamber Awards, got to present some of the awards to the winners that have already been mentioned, and it was a very, very nice event. Couple thank-yous. First of all, thank you to all the people who called me about being named mayor. Most of you could have left out the part, maybe you'll do better this time, or good luck, and all the subtle shots, but probably well-deserved. A special thank you to Les, you know, where you're leaving us? Why, I have no idea, but we're going to miss you. You did a hell of a job here, and we really, it was good to get to know you. Thank you. And I'd like to join in with the chorus for Frida, probably our most famous citizen. I mean, nobody else that I know in the city has been on Letterman, had a documentary done about her, and finally was memorialized on the CBS Morning Show this week. Frida's one of these people who could walk in and light up a room, and a lot, very few people have that ability, and she was, even at 96, just high-energy and a tremendous person to have as a friend. So, we will close the meeting in her honor later today. Thank you. We'll go on to items from the city manager.
Honorable Mayor, councilmembers, just a few items I wanted to mention to you this evening. First of all, as you may have seen, we're close to completing a significant amount of payment work that's been done in our community, and just wanted to bring that up to your attention, that we saw the grinding and overlaying of, excuse me, of Farquhar between Los Al and Bloomfield, and much-needed grinding and overlaying of the little cottonwood parking lot, and then, the Greenbrook neighborhood, the majority of the Greenbrook neighborhood was also treated as well. There's some striping that's remaining, but that's been a much-needed project. We hope to see more asphalt going down next year and the future years going forward, but a significant amount of work was done this year, and again, we hope to see more of that going forward. Also, wanted to make, let you know that a couple of months ago, we'd come before you requesting approval to go forward with an application to Housing Community Development for a planning grant, but we were notified recently of the awarding of that, so we'll be receiving $160,000, and we've identified that to go towards our Town Center Strategic Plan, so more information coming forward to you later on as we go through the process of finding a consultant team and coming before you to address that item. But, our focus, again, is on a Town Center Strategic Plan with that $160,000. Also, wanted to mention an event that's coming up this Sunday, the 26th. It's the Neighbor for Neighbor event, and this is an event to bring folks in the neighborhood together, various neighborhoods together, to pool their talents and resources focusing in on emergency management. So, that'll be Sunday at Orville Lewis Park from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM, and we'll have representatives from our police department, Orange County Fire Authority, the West County Cert, and Care Ambulance Service in attendance for that, so hopefully, folks are able to attend that and find out more about how they can be of resource and assistance in preparation for emergencies in the future. Also, there's a Coffee with a Cop coming up on Wednesday, February 12th, from 8:00 to 10:00, and that'll be at the Cotella and Pine Starbucks, so wanted to make you aware of that as well. And then, there's a few additional announcements, and I'll hand that over to Emlyn Noda, our Recreation Manager, to handle those.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and members of the City Council. We have two upcoming events in February and March, Race on the Base. We'd like to invite the entire community to come out. It's a 5K, 10K, reverse triathlon, glow-in-the-dark donut run, and it's both Friday, February 21st and 22nd. The proceeds do benefit the Fourth of July Firework Spectacular, and you can run on behalf of a charity or a LAUSD Unified School District school. And we also want to remind the City Council that there is a council and commission challenge that normally the Parks and Rec Commission and the City Council do tie on a couple of the different categories, but we do invite you to participate as a volunteer or a participant. Moving on to Weekend of Art, that is March 20th and 21st. We are calling the artist community to come out and submit applications, painting, drawings, photography, sculpture, even performing artists. We are welcoming applications, and you can find that information on the city's website at cityoflosalamitos.org. And back to Race on the Base, the registration for that is raceonthebase.com. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mayor, council, in closing, I just want to say thank you to each and every one of you. It has been an amazing, especially five months. You entrusted the opportunity for me to be interim City Manager. I've learned a lot from each and every one of you, and I will take that with me. You've both personally and professionally have influenced my life, and I very much appreciate it, and I hope that our relationship continues going forward, but thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Les. We'll move on to the warrants. You have a motion?
I'll move.
Second. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Murphy.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Turco.
Aye.
Councilmember Doby.
Aye.
Councilmember Gross.
Aye.
Councilmember Hasselbrink.
Aye.
So, they're approved. We'll go on to the consent calendar. All consent calendar items may be acted upon by one motion unless a council member requests separate action on a specific item.
I'd like to pull Item Aye.
Aye. Anybody else?
I'll move the balance.
I'm going to pull C.
Yep. Now, I'll move the balance.
Okay, thank you. I'll second. All in favor? Aye. Okay. On C, I'm just pulling C to direct your attention to Item Number Three. We still have a, we now have an unexpired term. They wouldn't let Tanya do both, even though I'm sure she could have, but we will be getting a new Parks Recreation and Culture Arts Commissioner, and for those of you out in the community, this is a great chance to get a small piece of city government without too much responsibility, but it is a lot of fun, and I recommend that you do it. I think everybody up here was a Commissioner at one point, and we fondly remember those days of the shorter meetings. Okay, so, we will go to Aye. Dean, you want a staff report?
Appointment order?
Oh.
Can I get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve C.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, on Aye. Dean, you want a staff report?
No, I just have a couple of questions.
Okay.
This is something that I've kind of pushed the city manager on for a couple of months here. City of Rosmo, or the city, the community of Rossmore, through Southern California Edison, changed all of their lighting, streetlights, to more cost-efficient LED lights. They're a lot brighter, they're more cost-efficient in the process, and watching what we're spending for the cost of streetlights through Southern California Edison, this is a major factor. They've also worked out a way where they're going to do the work with no upfront cost, and they're going to amateurize the cost over 20 years to change out all of our streetlights in the city. The question I had, and I'm not sure who might be the staff member that can answer it, since Dave's not here, and I don't know if you're enough onboard at this particular point, but in a number of areas in the city, out in Carrier Row and Old Town East, Old Town West, we have a decorative type streetlight with sodium lamps in it. Do you know what will happen to those? Are they all going to be changed to LED also, and will it be a white or an off-hue type light?
I can answer that question.
Thank you.
Councilmember, this just represents the standard streetlight. It doesn't get into the decorative lights, so that would be a separate matter we'll have to talk with Edison about specifically, but what is before you this evening is specific to all of the standard streetlights we have, and the replacement of those heads to an LED fixture, but subsequent to that, we'll have to address, look into that further and see what we can do to address the conversion of those decorative lights in other areas of our community.
Can it be done in relationship as you go forward on this agreement, or does it have to come back to us?
The big question is going to be the ability for them to make that change out and what that cost will be. If we can wrap it into this, we will. However, it is a decorative fixture, and everything they've worked out here is a standard process that they go through, and that's why we can specifically identify the cost savings in working with Edison because of that. When it comes to the unique fixtures, we'll have to address that independently because it'll be a different cost, and we need to understand that rate of return and the responsibility associated with that. If we can't absorb into this, we will. If not, it will be back before you shortly.
Okay. And there's also some additional of those decorative lights north of Farquhar, behind the businesses on Los Alamos Boulevard, that at one time was intended to be a walkway area, and we tried to get the businesses along there to make their entrances off of that alley, and so decorative lights were put in there, but that's another area where those lights exist.
We'll have to see, and I don't recall off the top of my head if those are under our ownership or under Edison's ownership, and that'll be another factor, too, but we'll definitely look into that with them and report back to you about that. I'd also like to point out, too, that there's, we found redundancy. We're going through a process right now to identify redundancy of lights. We have a number of streetlights that are in close proximity to traffic signal streetlights, so there actually may be a reduction, depending on that exercise, what we find out, there may be a reduction of streetlights, because there's several areas in our community where we've gone in and put street, traffic signals in, and yet, within five feet of that traffic signal was a streetlight that wasn't removed, so we're asking that question. Our Engineering Division's going to look at that, and then we'll be talking further with Edison to see if any of those could possibly be removed out of savings going forward as well.
The new lights on Los Alamos Boulevard in the Center median, are those LED lights, do you know?
Boy, off the top of my head, I don't. I believe they are, but I don't know for, we can get, we'll check on that, and we can get back to you on that as well.
Thank you. No other questions, so I'll be happy to move approval.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We will go on to ordinances. Introduction of anti-camping ordinance prohibiting camping and storage of personal items in public areas. City Attorney.
I think I'd be happy to provide you information, but I believe Les Johnson was prepared to deliver the staff report on this item.
Don't let us stop you.
Councilmembers, what's before you this evening is the same exact ordinance that was introduced to you in December, and if you're, in November, I believe, and if you recall, it was continued to this date specific, and I wanted to report to you that during that time, which I think is really the most pressing matter, is what's happening in the North Spa with regards to the shelters being established, and I received an update last week. The City of Placentia was actually pleased to report to all the North Spa cities that they are under budget and they are on schedule. They expect that center, that neighborhood's center facility to be open by mid-March at the latest. I also talked with their city administrator who confirmed that as well. The Buena Park, one is a bit further behind. They are anticipating an early to mid-May opening for that, but once one of those shelters is open, that allows us the ability to enforce this ordinance, so in the timing of that, and what, this coming before you, and the time that it goes through for second reading and going to enforce an effect, it'll be about in line with the time that the Placentia Shelter should be up and operating, so we anticipate the timing to coincide. So we anticipate the timing to coincide very closely within, or be within a week or two. So we think now is an appropriate time to bring it forward for your consideration, and if it does go into, goes through the proper process, it would go in force and effect, again, about the same exact time that those Placentia beds are available. And that would conclude my report.
Thank you. Any questions?
Go ahead.
So, you know, I know there's a reference in here in the agenda to us waiting to consider a model anti-camping ordinance. Is this what the North Spa has come up with as a model anti-camping ordinance?
No, we had reached out repeatedly to the other North Spa member cities to try to spur along that process, and ultimately, they were not moving forward as quickly as we would have liked, so we went ahead and prepared the ordinance before you, which is consistent with what you'll see generally across the board for these types of enactments. In the event the North Spa collectively does develop a model ordinance, we would then cross-check it against what we've proposed here and make amendments if needed at that time.
Okay.
But rather than wait, we thought, based on council's direction, it was more appropriate to bring something forward for your consideration.
Okay. And just so residents understand, you know, our city did not, prior to, at any time prior, have an anti-camping, anti-storage ordinance that prohibited camping on our public parkways, or storage of personal property on our parkways either. The city council last year, late last year, voted to contribute to these shelters that have been discussed, and so we're contributing to a solution, a regional solution. But at the same time, you know, we can now pass an ordinance that allows us to protect the health, safety, and well-being of individuals in our community, and I think it's important that we do that. In case a problem should arise in the future, we'll be able to enforce this ordinance. So, thank you.
Now you ready?
Yeah, would you like me to read the ordinance?
No, I had a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry. And I'm just asking more of logistics of when this gets put in, because we couldn't do this ordinance until the shelters were up and running. That's gonna happen, so we're gonna have two shelters, one in Placentia, one in Buena Park, serving 14 cities. So, and you might not know the answer to this, but, so we pick up a homeless person on our street, do we have to call to see if there's a bed available? Do we just show up in Placentia or Buena Park? Or, and what if they're full? Can we no longer enforce the anti-camping because we don't have a place to put them? Have they gone to that detail yet of how this is actually gonna work? Anybody?
Great questions.
My understanding is that there will be a protocol developed amongst the North Spa cities for making arrangements to transport individuals to the shelters and checking to see if beds are available as needed. To answer the tail end of your question, for all the North Spa cities, if there's a situation where capacity is full at both the shelters, then you would not be able to enforce the ordinance in those instances.
And my concern is, two shelters are servicing 14 cities, and, you know, we're trying to do all the right things, but we have no control over doing the right thing. So I just want to make sure that those are fully vetted out, and do we have a backup plan saying, you know, if they're full, you know, we can't enforce it? Do we have a backup plan, maybe starting to talk to Long Beach about Plan B, so if they're full, and it is just to keep our streets clean and safe and everything else? So I just want to be able to understand all those what-if scenarios when we do start enforcing it, how does it work?
Two things. One, we did check with Long Beach. They currently do not have a shelter. They are working on one in North Long Beach, but at this point in time, they do not have a city shelter. Also, I believe, one other city, I believe it was Fullerton, just if I remember correctly, announced that they are looking into the possibility of a shelter, if I remember correctly.
And Anaheim has one. I just want to be able to have those Plan B.C., because those two shelters are gonna fill up record-quick with 14 cities.
Yeah, the, Fullerton has the armory that they're trying to look at. It's a seasonal armory for inclement weather, and I think they're looking at it for year-round. I know that the Anaheim shelters that they have up also are not walk-up. You have to make arrangements in advance, and with most shelters, they're there to stay overnight, and then they have to vacate during the day for work or whatever is, they're going, before returning, so. But I also know that within, you know, prior to this, with Santa Ana and Anaheim and Orange, and I think Laguna has a small one, Beach, they were servicing all 26 cities, you know, so we feel we're happy that we'll have that many beds, and I believe it's 150 each, or 100 for each shelter, so I know that even Anaheim's, even though it does get full at times, there are times when it isn't actually
Right.
running full, but we can, we need to be able to access Anaheim's as well, that'd be part of the North Spa.
I just want to make sure, because all the cities now are either creating anti-camping ordinances, or they have them, and now they're gonna start enforcing them, so I just want to understand where we are in the pecking order, because it would be a shame to have an ordinance that we couldn't enforce simply because there's not enough space.
Thank you.
I have a question. Do they accept anyone, like men and women and children? And are they all together? Most shelters are, it's a man's shelter, it's a woman's shelter, or women and children?
The shelters required under this particular agreement are what are considered low-barrier shelters, which means they don't have restrictions that you may find another more specialized or population-targeted shelter, so my belief is these beds would be made available as needed to men, women, children, et cetera.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're gonna get a chance to read this eventually. Okay, ready?
I'm ready. Thank you, Mayor. Before the city council for consideration this evening is ordinance number 2020-01, entitled, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Los Alamos, California, Adding Chapter 12.52 to Title 12 of the Los Alamos Municipal Code prohibiting camping and the storage of personal property in public areas."
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Do we need a vote on this?
Yes.
Yes, if you could have a motion.
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Go on to 11B. Amendment to sequence of district elections in response to city council vacancy. Les, is this one you?
This one's Michael.
Oh, for two.
This is Michael. I was under the impression this one's the clerks, but
Oh, okay.
I'm, again, willing to jump in as needed.
I'll do it. So today, we have item 11B, which is a consideration of an ordinance to amend the sequence of the district elections in response to the city council vacancy. On December 16th, city council member Warren Kusamoto resigned, creating a vacancy. Council voted unanimously to fill the council vacancy until November 2020, and since that seat is now empty, we can, the council can change the district sequencing. So the ordinance before you tonight, we have districts 1, 2, and 3 up in 2020, and districts 4 and 5 in 2022.
Thank you. Would you like to introduce the first reading?
I would be happy to.
Thank you.
Before the city council for consideration this evening is ordinance number 2020-02, entitled, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Los Alamos, California, Amending Ordinance 2018-05 to Revise the Sequence of District Elections."
We have a motion on this one?
I'll move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Okay. We'll go on to the discussion item. Reconsideration of city council member appointments as representative to other agencies and city committees for 2020. City Clerk.
Yes.
Got one right.
Okay. On January 14th, 2020, the city council appointed Tanya Dobie to fill the vacancy created by former council member Warren Kusamoto's resignation. This report provides relevant information for council's reconsideration of the annual appointments to allow council member Dobie an opportunity to serve. The two that we have up for consideration are the Orange County Mosquito and Vector Control District, or the Orange County Library Advisory Board. Mayor Protem Chirko serves on those committees now, and he has offered to step down from one of them or both to allow council member Dobie to the opportunity. It's up to council's discretion.
Thank you. Did you want to step down from both?
No, I mean, just, I think just one is fine. The issue that there is there, in any case, is that there's a conflict. When there's a meeting for library, it almost always conflicts with a meeting for vector control, so it's hard for one person to do those two anyway. Excuse me, but I think my term is up for mosquito and vector control, and I thought since council member Dobie has joined, that perhaps she would, she would like to participate in that great organization. It's a lot of fun, and, once a month, are the meetings, so I'm willing to step aside if she's interested.
And keep the library board?
And I'll keep the library board, sure.
I'd also like to suggest that Tanya be put on as the alternate for the Westcom in my place. So, do we need a vote?
Yes, please.
I'll move, I'll move that.
Do I get a vote?
No.
And just to clarify, for the Orange County Mosquito Vector Control, is it for one-year term or two-year term?
What are our options? I mean, I know there's an election, so.
It is either for one year or two, one year or two years, and the appointee just has to be a resident of Los Alamos, not a council member. So if he did appoint for one year, she would serve the whole 2020 year.
Okay, why don't we just do 2020, then?
One year?
The whole year?
Okay.
Can we do that?
Mm-hmm.
So it's one year on vector, alternate on Westcom?
Yes.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve those two.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We will go to the closed session now. Okay, we're gonna move on to 13, closed session. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. The city council adjourned into closed session to discuss items 13A and B as listed on your agenda.
Thank you.
The city councils reconvened from closed session with a couple of items to report out of closed session. First, I would like to report that the city council has unanimously appointed, or voted to appoint Recreation Manager Ron Noda to serve as acting city manager effective immediately until the new permanent city manager position is filled and the new city manager commences his work with the city. We anticipate that date to be February 3rd. The second item that I'd like to report is that the city council has concluded its negotiations with respect to the city manager employment, and I will provide a verbal summary of the proposed city manager agreement prior to any action being taken on discussion item 14A of the agenda. And that concludes my closed session report.
Thank you. You need to discuss the terms?
I would be happy to go into 14A, if you're comfortable with that. So I've provided to the city clerk copies of the proposed city manager employment agreement that is before the city council now for consideration. I don't see any members of the public present, but if there were any who are interested in receiving copies, we have copies that can be distributed. I'm pleased to present for your consideration a proposed city manager employment agreement with Mr. Chet Simmons. Mr. Simmons, if the agreement is approved, would come to the City of Los Alamos by way of the City of Westminster, where he has served as assistant city manager since March of 2015. The Brown Act requires that a verbal summary of the salary, compensation, and fringe benefits to be paid under the agreement be provided prior to the city council taking final action on the proposed agreement. I'll summarize the agreement as followed, as follows. If approved, the city manager will receive a base salary of $189,600 annually with automatic 2% salary increases for each subsequent contract year of the three-year contract. The city manager could also, subject to the city council's discretion, receive a 2% annual performance-based incentive bonus. The city manager would be entitled to 80 hours of administrative leave. The city manager would accrue vacation leave at a rate of 120 hours during each, during year one, rather, of the agreement, 136 hours during year two of the agreement, and 152 hours annually for the third and final year of the agreement. The city would contribute up to $1,400 per month toward the payment of health, dental, and vision insurance premiums for the city manager, or an in-lug cash payment if the city manager opts out of the city's insurance program. The city would provide the city manager with $700 monthly car allowance, or with a $700 monthly car allowance, and the city would provide the city manager with a city-issued cell phone or a $70 monthly cell phone stipend if the city manager elects to use his personal cell phone. The city would reimburse the city manager up to $1,200 for a one-time purchase of a laptop computer or tablet for city business. This device would be returned to the city upon expiration of the agreement, and the city manager would be entitled to a severance payment of up to six months' base salary in the event he is terminated without cause. And that concludes my summary of the proposed agreement.
Thank you. Any comments? Questions? Motion?
I'll move.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Should that be roll call, or not?
It's not a roll call item, no.
You want to call one more time?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
You want to call for vote one more time?
Sure. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none? Congratulations to Chet, and we look forward to working with him. That's all our fun for today. Les, thanks so much for all you did. Thank you, Les.
And we're adjourning in Frida's memory?
I'm getting, I even got the gavel up, Dean. We will adjourn in memory of Frida Kaplan. Lived a great life. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're done. Want a copy?